At March twenty-one, twenty-three, at six o'clock. To watch the live telecast on YouTube, Daily City Video Meeting, or www.dailycity.org. Public participation. There are two ways to submit a public comment. One, submit written comments by meeting day. And second, attend the meeting in person. Okay, we're not going to go through all of that others. But I'd like to call this meeting to order at six oh one. And now let's do the flag. Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. And if I may, I received notice late after the agenda was published, but we now have access to view the meetings on Channel twenty-seven once again. We were having technical difficulties.
Oh, great.
So President Felpua.
Present.
Vice President Lex.
Present.
And Trustee Hichiko.
Present.
Okay. I want me to have an approval of the agenda, approval of minutes from our last meeting, regular meeting of February twenty-first.
I move that we approve the agenda for March twenty-first as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You have any public comments? And let me just be advised that their speakers are limited to two minutes unless modified by Library Board President. The Board cannot take action on any matter raised under this item.
I would also like to move the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any public comment?
There were no public comments submitted online, and it doesn't appear that we have any in the room, no.
Thank you. Okay. So now we're going to move down to our Director's Report.
So at our last meeting for the agenda building, an overview of the budget was requested. We're actually kind of towards the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Our, well, you're aware, but our budget year goes from July first to June thirtieth. And so this is, this will be a little bit familiar, but for people who more recently joined us, I'm going to actually have to move over there because my remote's not working.
So for any city department's budget, or in our cases, a division of the department, we have, we have our, you know, as our base, our mission statement and the services that we're providing to the city. And do we have a poll? Thank you so much. Sorry.
Thank you so much. Okay. So you'll find this if you review our budget online or in the budget book. We have a mission statement. That is a joint mission statement, the Joint Department of Library and Recreation Services, and that's serving our neighborhoods and empowering generations by bringing people together to foster community, lifelong learning, and healthy lifestyles. And so we have numerical figures for amounts that we can spend for various things. But at the core of it, what we're trying to do is promote and foster lifelong learning and personal enrichment for people in our community, to promote youth scholastic achievement, help them be successful in school, be ready for school if they're preschool, provide leisure, learning, and cultural opportunities, which promote play, healthy lifestyles, and community engagement to really build a strong community that gets along and prevent isolation and promote vibrancy of the senior and disabled adult community and everyone else. So that's, that's what we're working towards every day. Here's an overview of our four libraries. And really, these are kind of our basic things that we've used for forever to kind of measure the busyness of a library. And it just gives a sense of the relative size. We do have four libraries for the community, which is a lot considering it's not geographically a really large community. But we are a community of neighborhoods. So it's nice for people to have a neighborhood branch. And so we have the Bay Shore branch, which is our smallest branch. Over on the other side, it's a little bit farther away from, from everything else. So it's really nice to be able to provide services at that location. It's in a, it's in a multi-use facility, which also adds to it. You can see the collection size is the smallest in the circulation, and annual visits is lower. The open hours are forty-four, which, which is not a huge number for, for a branch library, but it's a huge improvement over what we had previously. We have been down to just two days a week. And so we're working on bringing people back in and providing, you know, those open hours to people in that neighborhood. We have the John Daly Library, which is top of the hill in the War Memorial Building. And that one, I was just there today. It's looking beautiful. And our main library, Ceramone, which I'll just throw in, did close early today because we had a power outage, so they closed at five. That's our main library. That's also where we have our business offices. So I have an office there. We receive our deliveries of new materials, process them, you know, do all of our centralized work at that location. And then we have our Westlake branch, which is nearby here. And that one is open till eight tonight if anyone needs a library with power. And then we have our budget, which is divided into expenditure categories. And these are the basic categories that are used by the city to categorize funds. So these are our expenditure categories. As you can see, the, by far, by far, the largest category is salaries and benefits. And that is true throughout the city. And in fact, I would say that some of those other categories, really at the heart, are in fact also costs for personnel. So we have like fixed charges, but those are charges for services that we receive internally, with the custodial services, which obviously is done by people. And so that is the biggest chunk. The library has nineteen point seven-five FTE of full-time. That's really nineteen people, plus we are, we have half of a director, which is a currently vacant position. And then we have one quarter of an admin assistant, who really helps out a lot with some of our administrative work. And we, and those positions are shared with the other division, the Division of Recreation. And then we also could not make it without our hourly staff. We have wonderful hourly staff at all our locations. So it's a, it's a casual position, but some have been with us forever and some, you know, students in there just with us for a semester. So we have actually one person who works two hours a week. Obviously, she started with more, but they have other jobs often. And on up to about eighteen hours a week is the max. That's, that's what makes up our salaries and then the benefits for the full-time staff as well, and then associated personnel costs. Fixed charges, as I mentioned, also really is, a lot of that is going to be personnel. That's going to be things that are set actually by our finance department is just calculating out a portion of the costs for public works, for, which includes custodial, building maintenance, our, the IT, you know, we have phones and things like that. So we pay a share of that. And then we also have services and supplies, which is a little bit of a miscellaneous. So it's going to be utilities, obviously, power and water, things like credit card processing fees, office supplies, those sorts of unglamorous things. We also have a big chunk of that as contractual services. And the lion's share of that is related to our PLS membership. And you really, it's priceless. We are a member, of course, of the Peninsula Library System, and so we have a share of cost of all the services that are managed at the consorcial level. And then we have also our physical collections. So we buy a lot of books and we buy, you know, the materials to, to process those. So cover, mylar covers, all those things. And then we also have our e-resources. They're not non-tangible, but we have subscriptions renewed annually for our databases and then all of our ebooks, e-magazines, e, we have downloadable video, those sorts of things. And then finally, it's actually a fairly small chunk. It does, we have program supplies. And when we, many times, if we get a grant, often, more than, more often than not from the DCPLA, that's usually actually something that goes into, into that budget. So that budget actually grows during the year, whereas everything else is just set at the beginning by the budget. And then, yes, I wanted to talk about the grants. So most importantly, I'll say year-to-date because I know that the DCPLA and Caitlin's here to report on that just had a big fundraiser. But you can see they've given us a tremendous amount of money just so far this year. They, the Fund the Need last year was successful, and they, they provided a grant that fell into this fiscal year. We've had two Gordon L. King Memorial Grants, and they've done a matching grant. So one of the other sources of grants that we have is the state of California. We, we got a grant for a story walk, and DCPLA matched it. And so we're able to do two of them, which is fabulous. And then also to help us with our document stations, which are finally up and running and available just in time for tax season. So that, that's what I have for the budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Chela, can you go on your first slide, please?
Oh, sure. That one?
Yeah. So Westlake and Bay Shore, they're only an hour difference, or even with John Daly.
Yeah, so Westlake is open Tuesday through Saturday. And Saturday, we close at five instead of six. We just historically always have. That wasn't a busy time, I guess. And, and so that, that ends, that's why they have kind of an odd, odd, well, literally, they have an odd number of hours where everyone else has an even number of hours. We do attempt, when, when the hours are set, to stagger certain things so that, for instance, the, the day that each library is open later, it is different at the different branches. So that if, you know, on a Thursday, you need something and it's after six, you can go out to Bay Shore and they're open until eight. And they have a, you know, they have a later story time.
Chela, I had a question about the first slide that listed the sort of goals for library, mission statement, and core services. Thank you. Is, does this include recreation?
Yes. So as we're a Department of Library and Recreation Services, there's a few things. So if you, if you look at our budget document, these are things that we share. And then there's a few things that are just going to be recreation and a few things that will just be library. But these are, these are things where there's some overlap.
Thanks.
So when you say that there's a share of staff between libraries and Park and Recs, what's the number of staff that we're looking at? And what exactly do they, do the titles that they have?
There's, there's a department head position, which is currently vacant, and that one is just split fifty-fifty. And then there is a, an admin assistant who mainly works in recreation. He's, he's based out of the Library and Recreation Admin Offices, but about twenty-five percent of his time, he's, he's available to assist us with, you know, higher level clerical things and administrative work. We also do a lot of collaboration, but that's not necessarily reflected in the budget. It's just, you know, we work together, particularly at our, our locations where we're in a shared facility. I know Bay Shore is one of those where there's a lot of coordination.
Actually, I didn't realize that Bay Shore and John Daly were almost comparable to Westlake in terms of operating hours. That's pretty good.
Yeah, we're, it was just, it was a great relief to be able to restore hours at those locations.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I'm just looking at the numbers of participation of, you know, for Bay Shore, it's a little low. Just wanted to see how can we promote more. I'm almost thinking that the, one of the problem is the location of where it's, it's just high peak on the top and for any seniors to walk, for walking distance. And it's a little high for a walk.
It definitely is. But I, I do know that the librarian, branch manager at that location has been doing a tremendous amount of outreach. She's, she's incredibly dedicated. And she, she's been working with the Senior Friendship Club. And so she'll, I think one of the things that's essential at that location is that staff leave because if the patrons aren't coming in, we need to go to where the patrons are to go out, provide services outside the library, and then also, you know, encourage people to come in. It's definitely, has, yeah, attendance is low. There's, I mean, it's a slightly smaller population. It's not as densely populated in areas, say, top of the hill. That could be also part of it. I know there's a lot of focus on, on serving the, the students in that neighborhood. And I think that they've done a really tremendous job there. Definitely any, any help in making sure everyone knows the library's there, it's available. It's a warm and welcoming, lovely spot. I think actually, somebody made a visit, right?
Yeah, I made a visit there, yeah. And you want to make, yeah, I would, I would agree with, with Madam Chair that it is in a location that is hidden. I myself got lost. I went all the way to the top and I thought the car was going to start rolling back. I mean, really, I was like, because I, I didn't see a sign or anything like that because it was, something was blocking it. And, and I turned around and I said, okay, let's slow down a bit, you know? And I finally found it.
Hidden.
It is very hidden. You know, I made a, I asked Christina, the manager at that library, if there could be like a sign that could be put up there, you know, like a sign on the bottom of the hill that says "library". And then you put something right at the entrance of the library. That's pretty, that's pretty high. That's very visible because if I can miss it anywhere, I'm sure many people have missed it too.
Yeah, there is, there is a sign at the bottom, but it really blends in, yeah.
I would really suggest that something higher. That's, you know, visible, like, you know, eye level.
Yeah, we had had a flag for a while, but I'm guessing.
It's just windy and it's got beat up real bad.
Weather.
Yeah, because it is windy up there.
Very.
Right. Because I was, I actually went to the front of the center and I thought, I said, oh, no, this is not the parking lot, and I accidentally parked at the fire station. And I didn't realize that, so I had to run back to the car. And then I had to pull someone out of the community center. I said, "Look, buddy, you know, I'm new here. I don't know what I'm doing. Where's the library?" He goes, "Oh, just go down to the corner, take a ride, and just go up." I'm like, okay, so I went up. He didn't tell me to take a ride. But it is a nice library, though.
And then you end up at a dead end. And then you end up at a dead, dead end and then all the way and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if, if the, the Community Center marquee thing is working.
The last time I was there, it did seem like it was having technical problems. I, I don't know, though, what the status is.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Or?
Yeah, I had a quick staffing question. How, how many folks does it take to staff Bay Shore in the run of a day compared to Ceramone? Does it match the amount of traffic that comes in?
There, there is a minimum number of staff that's required and by policy for safety reasons. I'm sure you'll understand. We do, we do require that there be two people on duty. And then, of course, everyone's entitled to their meal break and a rest break, you know, per California law. And so we actually end up requiring really a third person for at least the majority of the day. And then also, so that the librarian can do outreach, can go downstairs and provide services in the community center and go to the schools, all that, we often need a little extra. But there is, at that location, there is one librarian full-time and there is one library assistant full-time. And then we have a couple of aides. And so they, they stagger their schedules to try and cover.
So about two to three people a day on average?
Yeah.
And do they ever feel like strapped with staffing? Or is it, it's just enough?
Well, it's never. I think one of, one of the themes always is, you know, you can, you know, you have an amount of staff that's allocated, but there's always going to be somebody out or somebody got called for jury duty or some people take vacations. And so that's, you know, that's just the theme of, of operating. Any, probably anything, not just the library, I'm sure.
And so you pull staff from maybe like Ceramone to cover?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I guess there's nobody else. Thank you, Chela, for that report.
Yeah, thank you. It's wonderful.
Okay. And then potential collaboration, I'm just going to let you talk more into that.
There we go. So this is really just to try and gauge if there was interest in, in doing a potential collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and the Daily City Public Library Associates, perhaps some kind of an event or, to be determined. I think if there is interest, if you'd be inclined, maybe forming a subcommittee to discuss offline and, and come back and, and share.
Okay. Does anybody has any?
I'm not too familiar with that, sorry.
I think it's a really good idea and one that's properly overdue. And, you know, I would be interested in being part of the subcommittee. You know, I know the principles of DCPLA and certainly of the Daily City Coleman Chamber of Commerce, so. And I've been impressed, I should just say, with the amount of support that we've received from the Daily City Coleman Chamber of Commerce in the recent months. I really appreciated the fact that they turned out for the DCPLA luncheon and that other members of the business community, who either have supported us or potentially can support us in the future, also were there. But, yeah, I think this would move us in the correct direction to develop better relationships and, and coordination and, you know, mutual support.
Would anyone else be interested in joining the committee?
So I was able to sit next to one of my dear friends of mine and was able to introduce Dr. Lex to, during the luncheon. And he said he was a member, became a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And then I start asking questions. Who exactly sat on that, you know, committee? And then what exactly do they do? And what's the purpose? What are the objectives of their, what's the mission statement? And he was able to give me just a browse of the runaround. And I found out it was mostly the members of the, was mostly business, business people. You know, and then I was like, well, what am I going to do there? I don't own the business, you know? But I felt, and, and then I saw that you posted, and I'm like, wait a minute. But then, you know, you really don't need to have a business to be part of the team. You just need to bring what your, your strengths are. What are you, you know, you're doing in the daily life? And just collaboration to, together. And what I saw, and, you know, it's a, it's way overdue, like Dr. Lex was saying. So if anybody else would like to be part of it, if not, and this is all voluntarily work, you know, we're, we're not. I know that we all have, you know, a table full of things to do. So if you're welcome to join, and I don't know exactly what, how many members are, how many people members in the subcommittee that you're requesting, that you're suggesting, Chela? I mean, if Dr. Lex is in, anybody else? I'm, I don't know if there's a number?
Well, per, per the Brown, Brown Act, it can't be more than two.
Okay. So I'm letting my fellow trustees to see if they want to be.
First of all, what is, what is the subcommittee about? Because I need to have a better idea.
So I've, I've received, you know, casual inquiries from different, actually, a few different parties that might be interested in doing this. And so rather than, than trying to hash it out in a meeting, it's just to see if, if there's a role for the, the Board of Trustees to be part of that kind of collaboration. DCPLA is a member of the chamber, I know, to discuss probably in some sort of a joint event would be my.
So basically, this is with the, is part of the Chamber, Daily City Coleman Chamber of Commerce? So it is a part of that?
And along with the Daily City Public Library Associates, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, is it just, is it like this? Like, like a Board of Trustees meeting type committee?
No, no, a committee would just be, so it's, it's less than a quorum of, of, of the Board of Trustees so that, you know, you don't run afoul of the, of the Brown Act and so that you can just potentially reach out, talk, talk amongst yourselves, and then also reach out to see if this is in fact a good fit. It, it may not. Or it may be, you know, better for different people to take this on. But just to explore the possibility of, of doing some sort of collaborative.
With the, with the, with the Chamber of Commerce? Okay.
Kind of be a, and this board could potentially be, you know, just a partner or a sponsor.
Oh, okay, okay. I get it, I get it.
And if I understand Chela's proposal, the subcommittee would be a, an initial brainstorming group to talk about what we might do, you know, bounce ideas back and forth, and then bring them to the meeting for further discussion and action.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for clarifying.
Are there any other, you know, boards that are besides the Library of Trustees? Are there any other, like the Park and Rec or the planning or the?
Personnel.
Personnel? Are there any other subcommittees?
The, the people that I spoke to were kind of people in the, in the, associated with the Library Associates.
Oh, okay.
So I think that was, it was more of a library interest, but definitely there's, I mean, possible, different possibilities could be explored.
Any? A couple years back, we did a kind of a breakfast with all the different commissioner, commissioner, was it? A commissioner's breakfast, and we went over the Brown Act.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, so what I, what I envision, is it something like, is that what we're envisioning? Something like that where the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Trustees are just collaborating for a purpose and then going from there?
Yes, I would assume it is. And these are, you know, all stakeholders with, you know, within Daily City. What its beauty, you know, I'm, I'm very fortunate to, you know, appreciate the fact that Chela was able to suggest this. And I think there is a, you know, sometimes there's a reason for everything. So this is a good timing for us. And with all the, you know, our goals to do a fundraiser, how can we fundraise, you know, more? These are, you know, these are the kind of friends you want to keep them around.
Right.
You know? That they bring the, you know, they bring the ideas. They bring, you know, collaboration. They bring the funds. They know people, the networking.
And the other thing is that to have a vibrant business community, you need a vibrant community at large. And libraries are certainly one of the keystones, you know, of that, those services. And I think the more that the business community sees that and appreciates it, the more likely it is that they're going to support the Daily City Libraries in a variety of ways. Through support for fundraising events like the luncheon, through grants, through special events that DCPLA would organize, through sharing their social media contacts with both organizations. And we, you know, could be responsive to requests that they have, ways that they think we can improve. I just think the more they know about us and the more they feel connected to us, the better it's going to be for all three organizations.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with Dr. Lex. I agree.
So who would like to be with Dr. Lex in this subcommittee?
For the subcommittee, it, are we able to like email one another informally? Or does it have to be like?
I, I think so. So just like the subcommittee, what Dr. Lex and Christine was working on the, on the B thing, on the B project, so.
But I believe, were, were you all actually meeting up?
We did.
Yeah.
But we also, you know, we're in contact through text and, and email. And, and I'd be, I mean, I obviously have more discretionary time than anyone else on the board, so I wouldn't mind, in a sense, leading this subcommittee and then managing with my committee member to solicit ideas and thoughts and bounce ideas off and get feedback. to solicit ideas and thoughts and bounce ideas off and get feedback before coming and presenting that to the next meeting.
Okay, I will, I will join Dr. Lex in the subcommittee.
So we have Dr. Lex and Ms. Angela.
Yes.
And then you guys offline, you guys can connect on, you know?
And, and I'll, I'll communicate with you just to make sure, before putting it on the agenda again, you're, you're ready to have another discussion.
Well, the other thing is if you put it on the next month's agenda, that will kind of be an incentive to be ready.
That's true, true as well. Well, that's such as the nature of collaborative programs.
We'll put that in on building, urge in the building, maybe.
Well, thank you so much, thank you for volunteering yourself. I'm looking forward to, to hear you first get together with the chambers. Thank you, okay. Trustee report. Community engagement meet and greet event. So, we haven't set a date for that, and if we can look at our calendars. Definitely not March, March is gone.
What would it be ideal for a weekday?
So, I want to target, I don't want to show veritism, but I want to target the lowest patrons attendance. And that will be Bay Shore. I don't know, gentlemen?
I, I like it, I would agree with Bay Shore, it's, you know.
Any day that?
Well, we do, it's a little ways away, but we do have National Library Week starting on April 24th, if you wanted to have it during National Library Week.
I think that's great, it can really connect, you know?
Monday?
Oh, it's a Monday, oh, yeah, it's fine, okay.
Well, it's the, it's the whole week.
Yeah.
Because the 27th is the DCPLA Youth Laureate Contest.
Oh, okay, okay.
The 27th, I have that on my calendar.
I mean, I'll, I'll agree with, with whatever days will be open and convenient for the rest of the board. I mean, I'm, I'm very flexible with that.
But let's, any day?
It depends on the day and the time, but I was wondering if there are any events coming up at Bay Shore that would likely give us a larger number of people to meet and greet with.
Aren't they, when I was there, Jayla, they were talking about some event, no, that's in the summertime, forget it, yeah.
They are gonna also have a collaborative event with, with the folks from Creation, but it's on a Saturday when the library wouldn't normally be open, so I think it's probably not ideal.
So they, they have a crafty club at Bay Shore, and that would not be on the week of the National Libraries. But it's on the four, the 4th, the 13th, the 18th, at 5 o'clock. I mean, if we're expecting patrons on that day, that would be a good opportunity for us.
The 13th would be great.
The 13th?
I, I would, I would favor that.
I, I'm, I can't.
Okay, then let's do the 18th.
I have another board meeting on that day.
April 18th?
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 Wouldn't, wouldn't we have our meeting here?
That's our meeting here.
Okay, then, then, then do it on 99.
We don't have to do it that way, it was just a thought.
So, Jayla, when, when is National Library Week again?
It's, it's the 24th. The 24th.
Oh, the 24th, okay.
Well, it's the week of the 24th, so the 24th through the 28th.
Okay, let's do it within that week. Whatever day my fellow board members are available, I will, I will be more than happy to adjust my schedule.
And, and the staff at Bay Shore can, can help promote it as well.
Exactly.
It may be a small attendance.
Unless we do it like the 10th, any of those days, the 10th, 11th, the 12th, or the 14th, and then we can report in on the 18th. Or that Monday, the 17th. The Bay Shore open on Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What do you guys think?
Uh, what, I mean?
So we have the 10th, the 11th, the 12th, because I'm not available on the 13th, and the 14th, and the 17th, because we're meeting on the 18th, we can all report in on that day. Whatever is good for you guys.
I was also wondering if, if there's a way that we could provide some sort of incentive or magnet to draw people, you know, to the event? Because ordinarily, I don't think people would just come to meet us. You know, and they probably would think, well, you know, I don't have anything to really say about the library, you know? We could think of some way to entice members of the community to come up and be there for something, you know, other than computer skills, which would be a narrow audience, or even the crafty club, which might be a narrow audience. That might help with attendance. And that's really the purpose, for us to have maximum contact with, you know, the patrons.
The 11th is good, that's a Tuesday.
There is a storytime at 6:00 PM on Bay Shore on Thursdays. What about Thursday, the?
I'm not available on the 13th.
Oh, they're not available the 13th, okay, okay.
It's not a, a large number of families that have been attending, you know?
All right, okay, I, I think I'm okay with the 11th, if you all are free, the 11th.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the adjustments to make it on the 11th.
So, April 11th?
Just send a reminder, I forget.
What time?
What's a, what time are you guys, are you all a little bit busier on a weekday, after school?
After school, but it would be busy with school kids. I can, I can check in with staff and see if they can recommend a time and, and email you.
Okay.
Some options to pick.
Perfect. Yeah, but I like Dr. Lex's idea. I know the libraries have these pin maker, Dr. Lex. Yeah, maybe.
Oh, the buttons?
Yeah. You know, and that's the, the week after the Star Wars. Is it April 4th? No, it's May 4th. Yeah, so Easter, that's the week after Easter. Okay, we'll think of a theme, maybe just to make pins for the little kids.
You know, I'm also wondering, and this just popped into my head, because I was in the Westlake Branch today, and I know this is true of Ceramati, and I'm guessing the other branches, there are always books or video materials that are available for sale at a very low price. And I was wondering if we could identify some of those that could be donated, so to speak, and given out for anybody who attends, you know, and say, you know, come and get a you know, a book, a youth book, you know, an action video, or, you know, whatever it might be, as part of the outreach and, you know, what the library would, you know, share with their patrons who come in and say, you gotta be here, gotta be there present to win.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Okay.
Okay. Good ideas, good ideas, okay, so, moving down to teen programming ideas. I know that we brought this up.
Yeah, this was a hot topic last meeting.
Did you, did you want to, again, form, form a subcommittee? To, to bring back some ideas?
Yeah, I think that might be good. I'm still interested in doing kind of like a presentation for financial literacy for, for the teens, just because I have all the materials and we're trained, we're trained to do that. Like I said, I've done it historically with Ben Franklin Middle School, and, you know, just, it's, it's, it's very interesting to me that a lot of students come in and they're just, just not knowledgeable about, you know, how to use a debit card or, you know, what the difference is between a credit card, or, you know, how many teens that are soon to be going to college, you know, their understanding of credit's pretty limited. So I, I'm still interested in doing that, unfortunately, I haven't printed out any materials for you all. I, maybe I'll add that for our next topic. But I know that, that Madame Chair is, had some really interesting ideas as well.
Yes, so.
More fun.
No, 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 it's, every idea is fun, but I, I wanted to go ahead and, you know, to go ahead and proceed with yours, and let's see how that turns out.
Their responses, and, yeah.
Okay, just let me know, what do you think I can do, or how we're going to, who do we want to be in that collaboration? The Park and Recs, because they have, you know?
So I did one virtually for Ms. Sarah when she was doing her Teen Tuesdays. I think there were several topics, like how to change attire, I did the, you know, what, what is banking and all of that. So I think as long as we are, are, are audience, we were able to capture it at a time where they're there, and I don't think they necessarily have to register or anything like that. I think it's gonna be helpful for us if they're all ready there, they can chime in and see, hey, what's going on? Maybe I can get the bank to give us some little trinkets or stickers or goodies.
Do you want to do it in a library setting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because when we, I did it, I actually did do this before at.
John Daly.
John Daly, and it was interesting because not just teens were interested, it was like other folks that were interested. And, you know, we got into different kinds of conversations about, you know, how they could help with their finances, so.
So I can reach out to the managers of the different branches and try and figure out what would be, you know, maybe the best spot?
I think for this one, though, we, we, we should capture Ceramati, because they're just the busiest as much as possible. And then, you know, eventually we can roll it out to different.
And you'll shoot out a date too, that is best, best fit to everybody's schedule as well?
Different dates, yeah, so we can.
So are you looking at next month, or?
Um, I would, April would be great if we could, I just don't know, I just don't know yet. But yeah, I, I would think the end of April might be nice, might be good, I just don't know, are we doing too many things?
Right, because they have the, the Youth Laureate.
Yeah, we can aim for May.
On the 27th, unless you want to move it to May.
Then move it to May, if you.
Okay, I'll, I'll work with staff to suggest some dates.
Okay.
And then you can just send us anything that each of us needs to provide, and we'll be there.
Okay, sounds good, um, the, I can, um, next meeting, I'll, I'll present the hand, handouts at our meeting, and that way you all can kind of get familiarized with the material. And then, maybe I'll bring a couple different kinds of guides, and then you get, we can choose which one is better suited for that date.
And then, do we need a flyer?
I think we've created a flyer historically for it, yeah, nothing fancy, just.
I, I can do that.
Teen talk, something catchy, but yeah, they're pretty good at that.
Angela, I don't know if this would normally be part of your package or presentation, but I was wondering if there's a way to tie in library resources that are linked to financial literacy?
Or maybe we can have it out, and that's where you all come in, right? And they are really knowledgeable about the, like, because the thing is, the program is called Better Money Habits, and it's part of the Community Reinvestment Act, you know, because we have finance, banks within our communities. We do a training to, you know, teach outside of the community. If, so, while I have handouts and I'm able to teach, I don't know that you all are able to chime in during that time, but if we can tie resources, like, hey, you know, guiding people, this is, uh, maybe we can have a table of different resources, and then that would be a great intro to you all, like, hey, I'm the, you know, I'm a trustee member, you know, we're here to help you, you out, that kind of thing. But yeah, I love that idea of collaboration, yeah.
I was thinking of trying to find a way to integrate it into, you know, what you would normally present.
Right.
And say, and, and here's what your library can do to help you in addition to what we're talking about or in collaboration with.
Right.
You know, and if, if you don't remember something today, come back because there's somebody who can
guide you.
You know, say, this is what you need to look at online, or here's where you get that information.
Yeah, absolutely, because I know that there's a lot of resources that are available out there.
Great. So the other one, we can just leave it on the side, we need to focus on that one and see what we.
Yeah, let's focus on our meet and greet, and then we can, the next month, we can move on to our, it's called Better Money Habits is the program.
And then, you know, maybe towards the end, we can have like a small, like just a mini survey for that. And, you know, like asking them, what are other programs?
What are, what are you interested in?
For the teens, what, you know, what, what, what else do you want to learn? Or what would you want to, you know, see in the city of Daily City?
Yeah, what captures your interest, yeah.
Okay, okay. And now turn the time to our DCPLA report.
Yes. Well, hello everyone, it's so good to be here. Last time I, I was in front of you, it was on Zoom, so it's exciting to be in the room.
It's just you.
So, also, I just wanted to mention the collaboration that you guys are considering with the Chamber, I think could be really wonderful. I think the business resources that the libraries have available, I just think it's the perfect collaboration. So I, I'm glad you guys formed that committee. Well, is it?
Is it those?
That's okay. Well, I just wanted to let you know that the libraries, or the DCPLA's St. Patrick's Day Luncheon was a huge success. And it was a great community event, and of course raised lots of money. We have some preliminary numbers. We raised nearly 32,000 overall for the entire event, and that included over 7,000 for the Fund the Need programs, which was very exciting. And then, of course, are one of our upcoming events, Madame Chair you mentioned, the Youth Poet Laureate commencement will be on Thursday, April 27th at 6:30 PM, right here. Oh, perfect, so we hope to see you all there, it should be wonderful. I know the youth poets are amazing, it's just so great to see them perform, even the ones who don't win are amazing. And then, I wanted to mention, it's a ways out, but please save the date for our Second Annual Art and Lit Fest, which will be on September 9th, which is a Saturday, and that'll be at Ceramati Center. It was a great hit last time, and I, I'm sure we'll top it now that we know what we're doing, so hope to see you there.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate DCPLA, the luncheon was beautiful. A lot of people, the food was delicious, and the people were funny. Okay. Any trustee report? Anything to report?
Oh, well, you know, by, by my visit to Bay Shore, yeah, that was interesting. And I, I have already said the bulk of my, of my experience there, but it is a small branch, I, I did not expect that. I want, it, it, it's a beautiful building, it is, like you said, it's out there. But what I found beautiful about it, though, was that walkway, that little park there, that is, that's a nice touch. I mean, that will really, it kind of like reminds me of like Ceramati. You know, you, you have the library there, then you have a park there, that is, that is really nice. And I, Christina, the, the manager at that branch is fantastic, she gave me the grand tour. We even made a button. And I had fun doing that. And I really saw the, the scanners you're talking about, that is fantastic. That will really help the community a lot, especially like you said, if it's tax season, or especially when documents need to be uploaded, you know, like for, you know, like for, you know, certificates or something like that. And so that, that's a great idea, and I heard that John Daly will be getting one, yeah.
So current, currently, we have them in, in just three of our libraries, and, and the next stage will be at John Daly's.
We'll be at John Daly.
All four have that same service.
So it, and I'll, she also gave me the grand tour of the whole community center. That was really nice. That's, it's a very nice building. So, um, yeah, that, that was a great visit. Uh, like I said, just try to put some signs on the bottom of the hill there. And probably at the library, so people know where they're going, but overall, it was a great visit. I really enjoyed it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, well, um. I did, um, I heard from, um, I'm setting an appointment with Christina at the Bay Shore. To give me a, um, on about for the, um, document, documentation, uh, station. Um, so I think I'm sitting for Thursday this week to go visit her for that. And, um. Reading Across America at, um, Dr. Sue's birthday at Bay Shore. Uh, Christina from Bay Shore and Sarah were able to attend from the libraries and. They were there participating in reading to the children of Bay Shore. They also participated on the, um, our board meeting, the school district board meeting and did such a phenomenal presentation. A wonderful presentation on the homework online and the tutoring, the free, and it's just, um. And some of the board members didn't know that those services were offer at free at cost, you know, um, for the libraries. And also, you know, for the staff to even hear that as part of the, um. Part of the plan is to, the more hands on to, you know, assist the children. And it was a re- really good resources to show, to share with them. Um, what else? I was able to attend the, that adult poet from. What's his name?
Jorge Argüeta.
Yes, at the John Daly. Did you know, I never knew that that was John Daly. I thought John Daly was at Ceramoni. I drove there, I'm like, hey, the library is in War Memorial, why can't they call it War Memorial Library? You know, I'm like, it's not even on John Daly.
It's on Hillside.
A, a little higher, farther up on Mission, there is in fact the original Daily City Library that was gifted to the people of Daily City by. John Daly himself and John Marchbank, and, uh, it's been modified, they've add, did an add-on. But it's, uh, when the library moved out, um, the History Guild moved in and they have, uh, a local history museum set up in there. And, um, that's when the library, you know, needed additional space, cause it was, it was a very old building. And so that's why we, we moved it into the, into the War Memorial. Been happy to be there, it's a nice.
Somebody said, it's at War Memorial, I'm like, what? It was really good, um, to hear him and, my gosh, he is from Daily City, you know? And, um, Councilwoman Pamela Di Giovanni read two books that were written by two residents here in. They're author of Daily City. The Alphabet of Feminist was the, the book that she read. And then the other one is about a dog and the author lives in Franciscan. So, I was like, would you like to share that or donate that to any of our libraries? It's nice to have our, you know, residents in the community writing those books for us. Um, it was a pact to participate, a lot, a lot of people there to support him and it was really nice. Um, some of the, um, dignitaries were there too as well. That is my report and thank you again, DCPLA, listening and hearing. City Manager, um, reading out that huge amount of funds that has been donated to the libraries. It's just amazed to me with the work they do to help the libraries, so. Kudos to all the members and the board members for DCPLA. Okay, Dr. Lex, would you like to have anything to report before we move on to the next one?
I'll just save, uh, my comments for agenda building, that's the only thing I wanna mention.
Okay. Announcement and communications, upcoming library programs.
So if, if I may? I've got, uh, just a slide to share here. Next month, in addition to having, uh, National Library Week, it's also National Poetry Month. And, uh, we have, um, a collaboration with Dragonfire Community Arts. Um, they're working with staff at the John Daly Library to put on a really nice series of, these are actually workshops. And then it culminates in an open mic, so we've got something going on, um, every Wednesday in April. Um, and we're hoping to get the word out particularly, um, we'd like to, um, see young people join us if they're inclined. We're very excited about that. Um, and then, um, also, uh, this is a, a new and different thing. This is a, a collaboration with the, the librarian at Westmore High School, so a school librarian. Um, who's working with our own Sarah Spence, um, to do a storytime at the high school. So it's gives an opportunity for the high school students to, um, participate in offering a preschool storytime. And I know that Sarah talked to some of her many, many, um, families that come to her storytime at the library. And they were all very intrigued by this, so this is something new we're trying and, um, it's gonna be ten forty-five on March thirty-first. It's a Friday, Friday morning, and, uh, it's o- open to, to families to join them at the, um, Westmore High School.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's really a great collaboration. And Chela, would it be possible to let us know how that turns out?
Absolutely.
We'd love to know. I mean, I'd be really interested to know at the next meeting.
It's always nice to try something totally new.
Do the students get an extra credit for that?
I don't know. I'll, I'll see if Sarah knows. Um, she, she, Sarah is working directly with the librarian and, and they're, they're planning it. And I know they're both excited.
Thank you for those. Um, agenda building for next meeting?
Well, I'd like to suggest that we put little free libraries on the agenda. Uh, as a result of a conversation that Susan Brizden Smith had with me right after the DCPLA luncheon. Uh, for anyone who doesn't know Susan, she was a member of the Board of Trustees. And, uh, was one of the founding members of DCPLA and, uh, you know, just a rock. For many, many years in that role, uh, as Executive Director, uh, preceding Victoria. So, I modified an email that she sent to me and I passed it out to all of the members. Uh, to give you an idea of what her thought is and what we'll be talking about at the next meeting. So if you could just read it, think about it, if you have any questions, feel free to, you know, shoot me an email. And, uh, and we'll talk about what type of, uh, response we'll make to her proposal.
You wanna put down your, um, youth, the teen thing? And then, um. The subcommittee for Chamber of Commerce?
Yes.
Report?
Yes, get that on there.
And then the empty seat.
Hopefully it will be filled.
Do we know by any chance who the. Responsible, um, council member is that would make this nomination or?
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, I, yeah, they're, they're aware, so hopefully.
Is there anything else? No, it's seven o'clock.
There you go, right on the dot.
Okay, well, meeting adjourned at seven o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
All right.